Keep queued up.
They have good reasons.
Yeah, just for the response.
That way we don't get the whole.
Show up every day.
No, I know.
No problem.
Are you feeling?
I believe him.
You said? Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Almont Village Township. The village and township hall. I'm gonna call the board the regular meeting of the Almont Council, Village Council, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. To all the working states, one nation, one nation, and even if it's a law, the liberty of justice is our own. We'll call.
President Dyke.
Present.
President Pro Tem Stuffler.
Present.
Councilmember Feldman.
Present.
Councilmember Glasser.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Present.
Councilmember Powell.
Present.
Councilmember Schneider.
Present.
Um, do you have any additions or deletions from the night's proposed agenda? If none, I would propose a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. Oh. So, so moved. That's what I meant. Yep. Support.
Um, motion by Pres- or motion by Councilmember Schneider, um, seconded by, um, Councilmember Feldman to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Communications, the appear EMS report. Do we have, um, any questions on the EMS report? I had another communication about DT midstream showing responsibility, pipeline safety. It's like a survey. So I'll pass this on to staff to take a look at. Uh, moving on to consent agenda, um, regular meeting minutes from November fourth.
I had just one correction. Um, it's page ten overall of the packet. Um, the number, yeah, agenda item number three, regular agenda item number three. Um, it was me that made the motion and it was still Councilmember Glasser that did the second. No problem. That's the only one I had.
Anybody else on minutes? Being none, general fund. Major street fund, local street fund, Parks and Rock fund, DDA fund. Capital project improvement fund or project fund. Sewer fund, water fund, the equipment fund, payroll registry report. DPW report.
Just, uh, I'm sure this is a typo or a copy paste error down in the vehicle mileage. I'm sure they didn't drive a negative eight hundred twenty-five miles with the twenty twenty-four silver ride off.
You didn't see them going around the tongue back?
No, I didn't. Um, so I don't know. I don't know what the starting was, but I'm sure that just a copy paste error.
Yeah, we'll get it corrected.
Anybody else on DPW report? Wastewater treatment plant report. Please report.
Actually, back, can we go back real quick on this?
Yep.
So, I, just a quick question. I don't know, uh, Manager Kerberson. It, October thirty-first, it says they had a reset. They had to reset a tripped contactor for a submersible pump. Do we know why it tripped?
Yes, it was clogged, partially clogged. And, uh, nothing out of extraordinary that clogged it, just the same old type things, but it was, uh, somewhat clogged.
Active police report. Building permit reports. Financial report. Clerk Treasury report. There are no other, um, comments. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the, um, with the changes to the minutes as specified by Council member Schneider.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Council, or President Pro Tem Stuffler, supported by Councilmember Miller to, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion, motion passes. Now is the time for public comment for any agenda item. Do we have any public comment tonight? Being none, regular agenda item number one, homecoming, um, committee event plan. So this was the plan that we were, um, we had asked for previously that they said they would submit by tonight and they've given us an outline of, uh, a more robust outline of some of the events planned for the homecoming event next August. Um, does anybody on council have any questions or, or comments on that? I don't think, I think, I think it's more informational. I don't think there's no action to be done this, this time. Would we be in agreement with that?
Yep. With that, the only thing I can think of is we may want to tell them to pay attention to what we're doing with, uh, golf cart ordinance. Cause they mentioned they want to use golf carts for transportation. So they, they might have interest in what we do or do not pass as an ordinance because it would impact them potentially.
Is anybody else on council? Agenda item number two, first reading of the golf cart ordinance. We talked about this at our la- our last two meetings. It was updated last meeting. We had a consensus to go to first reading. Um, so this is first reading. It would then go to publication and it would come back to us for final approval. Do we have any further discussion, updates or changes we want to make?
I just had a question, um, on number twelve under section four, operation of golf carts. Uh, this was something that we discussed before about, um, what applies to, um, police officers, village officials, employees or contractors, um, during events. Um, and I couldn't remember from the previous version if it included this statement or if this was added, um, to help satisfy some of our concerns if it was the while maintaining general safety compliance. Is that, what was added?
Right.
Um, I just wasn't sure if that was intended to incorporate things like they still need to be a licensed, um, or have a driver's license, sixteen years old. Should, do we need to spell that out somewhere?
I don't think so.
Volunteers. Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know if this can apply to volunteers. Police officers, village officials, employees or contractors. I don't think it can.
Well, during Heritage Fest, during Heritage Fest, you have volunteers like DDA members that are driving golf carts.
Sure, but this can't apply to that, well, village officials, employees, contractors. But I, what I'm saying is I, I don't see that this can get volunteers out of complying with the regular golf carts. It should, it shouldn't in its current formation.
I think what Mindy's saying is that this exception should apply to, this exception should apply to those like that are under sixteen that shouldn't be, volunteers shouldn't be driving or because if, or we need to then update this because if you've got, I mean, at the Heritage Festival, you've got multiple people needing to use golf carts and if they're golf cart rentals, does that mean they need to register with the village before the festival?
There is something else about events?
I don't, I, I don't read this as the intention was that it would, would apply to volunteers. Right now, the word volunteers isn't there. So this, this particular language, number twelve, doesn't apply to volunteers. If we wanted it to apply to volunteers, I think you should add that and then further clarifying language. All I'm saying is I think we need to make a distinction of what our spirit and intent is. Should it apply to volunteers or not? And then we could move on to what other restrictions or expansions of the language. But it just, my reading of it right now, there's nowhere that volunteers could apply because they're not village officials, they're not employees, they're not contractors. If you want something specific as to volunteers, I'm happy to wade into those waters. All I'm saying is I don't, by the plain reading of the plain language here, volunteers do not apply unless, and if they do, under, under which category could you call them applicable? They're, they're not police officers, village officials, employees or contractors. Volunteers would be outside of all those descriptions, descriptions. If you want it to apply to volunteers, like I, I'm, like I said, I just try to clarify. First of all, I don't think it does. But if, if you want it to, we want to discuss that. I'm happy to. Right now, the way I would interpret it would be volunteers have to, number twelve does not apply to volunteers. Number, the volunteers have to follow all the rest of the normal provisions. They don't get an exception from the rules of the ordinance. Does anybody else feel differently that it does apply to volunteers?
I, I don't think it would apply to volunteers.
You don't think it does? I, I don't, I, I don't.
They would have to follow all of these rules.
Yeah, they'd have to follow everything else. So they'd have to be over sixteen to drive a golf cart. Right. So, and all the other rules that are spelled out for any other. In fact, it might be better to rephrase the very beginning of this sentence because it's, it's, it's not just that this section doesn't apply. It's an exemption, right? They're exempt from the ordinance. So it might be better instead of saying this section does not apply, maybe saying that, that the following parties are exempt from this section. I mean, it's, it's essentially what we're trying to create is an exemption and that exemption at currently does not apply to volunteers. I don't know if exemption would be a clear language, but does not apply is the same meaning, essentially.
To your second question, it's number seven in the next section that.
Oh, yeah.
Where it says that council can reserve the right to waive registration requirements.
For special events.
Yeah.
Well, from the DPA level perspective, I know how much they, if, if they want to make that festival and, and homecoming, if they want to make that festival successful, they need some kind of exemption to be able to utilize golf carts during the festival.
So.
So I think, so I think we do need to look and address that before we pass this.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be just like they come before us looking for, for approval of street closure and maps and other things when it comes time for Heritage Festival? They would request, um, they would request the, the right to waive the registration just like we just covered and then we, and then we do. Cause then beyond that, well, all I'm saying is I don't know that we would want to exempt the DDA and their usage of golf carts during the Heritage Festival at large. We still want it to be applicable. You still want them following a speed limit. You still want them to be over the age of sixteen.
Then we should have something in here saying that volunteer groups during, during community events have the right to come before council to seek.
Well, that's what seven does. The village council reserves the right to waive registration requirement for, of this ordinance for special events that utilize golf carts.
Okay.
So.
Registration requirement.
Sure, but because my whole point is, is do, what other parts would you want to exempt them from in a volunteer set? You would still want them to be sixteen, still want safety requirements. You still want speed limit. You, I, I don't know what else you'd want to let them out of.
So, so one example, during the Heritage Festival, they have a run on Sunday morning.
Yes.
It was part of my job to put down cones.
Okay.
During, before that race.
Okay.
If I would have to do that on foot, it would have been a two hour process. I drove a golf cart down the park path, which would violate this ordinance.
Okay. So you want exemption from certain parts, but not all.
Right.
That's what I think would need to be clarified. And I think you want to do that on a case by case basis, not a categorical.
But we would need to.
Have, have a, right.
But we, but we.
Have a back door for what you can exempt.
We need to have a back door here and right here only says registration.
Also, you are at Village Festival, so you would have been exempt, but nobody else in the DDA would have.
Right. So if I wasn't doing it and somebody else did.
Right.
But that, but, and if I wouldn't have served on the, the, um, committee and been involved, I wouldn't have known that. So, but, but it's, but I know they have use of carts throughout that weekend that are crucial for the event.
Sure.
They, they after dark, they have a necessity for golf carts during certain events.
So how could we?
Or either our officials or volunteers or groups. And maybe it's providing this draft ordinance to our DDA director for comment.
I think too, you got twofold too, right? Cause you might have rentals and then you may have people like myself that would donate, like bring their cart in for them to use the DDA as an example, right?
Yeah.
So then, but I'm just using an example, but like, let's say, you know, Holly had a golf cart. Well, was she exempt then? You know what I mean? At that point? Were her golf cart exempt? I guess what I'm saying, well, I know she is, but right. But let's say she's just a resident in general. I'm just gonna use that as, yeah. No, cause where's the exemption? Where's, I mean, I, I, I don't know how anybody on DDA with the exception of the village president could be exempt. Right now, the language doesn't apply to anybody.
Right.
Outside of.
No, they're not.
Right. So, but I don't, also don't think rental or they own it themselves is the issue here. We, number seven's language, the right to waive registration requirements, we could in, we could put essentially duplicative language in section four at the end, uh, right after number twelve. We could do a number thirteen, for example, and do the village, um, council reserves right to waive enforcement of certain provisions under this section for special events that utilize golf carts. Where you could choose which ones you want to waive on a case by case basis.
I think that, I think that's, I think that serves the entire purpose.
Right. Cause then you can.
Right.
You would go through this section each time based off of the request and you'd be able to, I think, the unlikely that you're gonna say, well, you can go sixty, you know?
Right.
Uh, you know, or, or they, they don't have to be sixteen, but you would be able to waive, for example, you know, certain, um, issues like not being able to go on the park path or, or something like that. I, I just think that baking in that back door, we're on a case by case basis, you can consider the circumstances.
And it keeps, it gives us final control, but it also opens the door up for them to be able to do things.
A little bit flexibility.
Yeah.
Right. But ultimately at our discretion. I don't like, I like giving us a door to that flexibility, but I don't like this wide open thing on a brand new ordinance we've never implemented that, you know, gives all kinds of functions.
No, I think, no, I'm, I think that's, I think that's a purpose.
Could you repeat what you said? Council reserves the.
Words, words, words. Um, yes. Uh, number, I was suggesting number thirteen under section four, new number thirteen under section four. Um, and it would be, the village council reserves the right to waive certain provisions of this section of this ordinance for special events that utilize golf carts. That way we can pick and choose amongst the provisions of the operation of golf cart section. I think that. Yeah, I think it's very reasonable to, to, to leave that there. I'm all, I, I like the flexibility of it.
Is everybody in consensus with that change? Does anybody else have any other questions or concerns about the ordinance? We only need consensus for first reading, correct?
Correct.
Do we have consensus on first reading? Agenda item number three, general complaint policy and complaint forms.
I'll jump in and say that, uh, we went over these last meeting. They were, uh, the, the item reviewed at the last meeting was based on the, um, turning what the council had planned or liked about the forms over to the attorney for their review. Uh, there were some questions and issues. The attorney addressed those directly, listed them out. Um, returned the modified forms to the village council. We reviewed them at the last meeting. Uh, I know there was at least one small revision and they're now back in your hands for approval.
Counsel.
So those new email addresses are operational?
Correct. I have not updated the website yet because we haven't approached.
Sure, sure. But they're, but they're, they're operational. So as soon as you do.
Correct.
And you need to send me the information so I can access it.
Yep.
Not gonna access it for just.
Next year, seventy-five emails.
Um, are we, aside from posting this on the website, are we doing anything to generate any awareness of how we're, we've created these, people know they exist, anything like that? But do we, do we put it out on any of our social media apps or anything like that? Or do we just quietly post it up there and good luck to you if you can find it or?
You have a sense to advertise it.
There has been a form on our website and it's able to be accessed through the OEO's site. It's always been there, it just has not been nearly this detailed or useful. So.
You're saying it's in, but it's an OEO complaint only?
Correct.
Right. So.
So, uh.
This is a bit different, just a little. So I just don't know if it would be a good idea. First of all, I mean, I, it, it's, it's a little bit of a transparency. Also, it's encouragement that if you did have an issue, you can present it. And if you don't have an issue, you'd at least like to know if I ever do, they're more than willing to do it and they've addressed it. Um, I don't, I, I see it as good public relations either way, but, um, that's just my take. I think creating public awareness of it would be a good idea, but.
Sure. And I, I assume that when the two county, uh, papers review our meeting though, end up covering in their stories too, so.
If it's a, if it's a slow news day, yeah. If it's a slow news day, I would agree. Um, what about the tracking system that we discussed last time? Have, have you guys figured out how you will navigate and track it going forward?
With results, the follow-up, and if there's any continuing issues that come out of it, a personnel item or whatever, they will have to take a different route.
I apologize. Never mind. I see the box missing that I had asked for before is, is there now. The, the for office use only for the date received, that, that the internal tracking, that's what I was asking about. Never mind. I, I apologize. I had missed it when I reviewed it last time. So never mind.
You agree with that, counsel?
I had a comment on the municipal form. Um, so I think last time I mentioned I wanted to see the information about how to be contacted and I see that added at the bottom. Um, I think I had another point of, um, we need some instructions how to send it. And I see on page sixty-eight at the top, there's instructions how to submit the administrative complaint form. I don't know if that was intended to also be part of the municipal complaint form.
It can certainly be added. It should be.
Oh, yeah.
So we want to approve the policy in the form?
Yeah, because we, we didn't vote. We just, we had consensus. We were okay with it, but we wanted to see the finalized versions and so we didn't vote.
And so, does anybody else on council have any questions or comments on the form or the policy?
I have a question for the clerk. Do you want the forms moved independently? So they're easily referenced in the minutes or?
Yep.
Yes, the motion, yeah.
Two separate motions.
There should be actually three. One, adopting the policy and two, um, motions to, um, approve each form.
Each form by?
Correct.
I'll make the motion that we approve the administrative and personnel complaint policy, ADM dash P dash zero zero one.
Support.
Motion by President Pro Tem Stuffler, support by Councilmember Stuffler to, um, approve the complaint, um, as stated on the record. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
And the support was Snyder. You actually said Stuffler twice.
Okay. Support was Snyder.
I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance enforcement and municipal services complaint form with the addition of adding, uh, instructions how to submit the form. Support.
Motion by Councilmember Powell, supported by Councilmember Feldman to, uh, approve the ordinance enforcement and municipal services complaint form, adding the instruction, um, on how to submit the form. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I'll make the motion to approve the administrative and personnel complaint form as presented.
Support.
Motion by, um, President Pro Tem Stuffler, supported by Councilmember Miller to approve the administrative and per, uh, personal complaint form. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, same sign. Motion passes. What's that? Oh. Um, that ends our regular agenda. Now is the time for public comment for any non-agenda item. Any public comment tonight? We have no discussion. Manager Kerberson, welcome back. Hope you're feeling better. Um, do you have anything to bring, counsel?
Uh, just touch base on a few items. We, well, we, tomorrow I have the wrap-up meeting with our engineering firm on the initial layout and details of the proposed DPW building in sight. So we should be able to have those plans and the drawing, not plans, but the drawings and the site size and that detail in our hands, uh, very soon. No, no later than, uh, the first of December. So that's exciting. I plan to then take that information and start, um, doing everything I can to find some funding for that project around the state, different places. But, uh, it's nice. It's been reviewed and reviewed and reviewed, uh, by everyone and they, they finally tweaked it. And I'm gonna be meeting with the engineer in the morning to, uh, get the final draft and get some big copies and go from there. We have been following up on our computer upgrade. As you all know, we bought new computers, installed them. And it, it's interesting how all of that new technology has slowed us down initially because we are jumping through all kinds of hoops to try and figure out why this one isn't talking to that one and some different things. And I was down for two days because contacting from my laptop to my office shut off my laptop, which then wouldn't allow it back into the system. So it's, it's just been interesting and it has slowed us down a little, but, um, significantly moving forward with, everybody has new, new equipment and it's, it's going well. It, it just has been a few little hiccups and ripples along the way. So if you've noticed, maybe it took a while to get back to you or something like that. That would be what I would, uh, point at as the problem.
You ditched the, the horse and buggy, bought a race car, but it doesn't always start.
Or it burns out and goes the other way. Leaves, we're still collecting all day, every day leaves. Uh, it's been going real good. Just want to say it because I know again, our quality county papers will probably put it in their article that we'll be collecting through December third and then, uh, pretty much it'll shut off for the, the winter months. Uh, we have a lot of staff off, uh, in the next few days through the holiday week next week. So, uh, you'll see a pretty empty office, uh, up here. It'll be Kim and I, um, it'll be Kim and I. We, we did have some, um, Ts to cross and Is to dot for closing out the union contracts. So those are. Ts to cross and Is to dot for closing out the union contracts, so those are, uh, getting formally printed now and then they will move back for signature and we should be done with that. Everything's going well. Everybody seems happy, uh, and that, at the, the last thing I want to say is happy Thanksgiving. That's it.
Your roles.
Not even happy Thanksgiving.
You just said it for everybody.
Well, I'm gonna say it. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Councilmember Wayne.
Nothing for me tonight.
Councilmember Foggman.
I'm good.
Councilmember Snyder.
Uh, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
President Protem Stedler.
Um, just, um, reminder that we have a hardcore meeting this week. Uh, if anyone had any further questions or concerns to bring towards hardcore, let me know and I'm happy to do that.
Councilmember Powell.
Just like to remind Kim to use her vacation. That's all.
Councilmember.
Like to reiterate what Councilmember Powell said, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
I just want to reiterate the leave pickup that the DPW has been out just mashing it. They're, they're all around town and you promote one day, they're going the next, so kudos, kudos to the work they're doing. And we are adjourned. You can come up and meet your fix.